Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucy Bissin and I'm the chairperson of the Lewiston Planning Board and I welcome you to this evening's planning board. And I ask Christine Kittredge to do a roll.
Roger Duprey.
Here.
Joshua Nageen.
Here.
Michael Markcott.
Here.
Lucy Bissin.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge. Amy Smith.
Here.
Lee Albert.
Here.
And Alexander Pine.
Here.
And as members of staff, there's Craig Tebow, the city planner, David Hediger, director and planning, uh, planning and code enforcement, and Linda Tripp, the administrative assistant. As well, Lee Albert will be a full voting member this evening in the absence of Shannon Cox. Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda, David?
No others in.
Any correspondence?
No additional correspondence.
In that case, we'll proceed to public hearings. First public hearing is the Lewiston Housing Authority and Lewiston Auburn Area Housing Development Corporation has submitted a development review application to construct a new three-story building with an 11,539 square foot footprint containing 44 residential units on a 3.26 acre parcel at 860 Lisbon Street. David, would you do the comments since Ms. Norton is not here this afternoon?
That's right. Uh, the property is owned by the city of Lewiston and the applicants have an option to purchase this property. This option includes the demolition of the existing Martel Building and construction of two new apartment buildings with a total up to 69 units. The project consists of two phases. In this phase, the existing school building would be demolished, some paved areas removed and revegetated, and a new 11,539 square foot building constructed in the northern rear portion of this 3.26 acre parcel. The second phase will be, will include construction of a second building on the south side of the site closer to Lisbon Street. This application is for Phase One only. The project is located in the neighborhood business district and the use of a multifamily development is allowed at a density of 2,000 square feet of lot area for each dwelling unit, which would allow up to 71 units. Phase One includes 44 units, which is well, well below the maximum density. The project is intended to provide housing for senior adults, which is 100% affordable at different income levels up to 60% of the area median income. Project includes the realignment of Marston Street to reduce pavement area, including the elimination of the vegetated area in the paved circle to allow easier, larger vehicle turning. New parking lot for the building is proposed with 23 parking spaces. For senior housing, zero, point zero, excuse me, .5 spaces are required per unit for a total required parking of 22 spaces for Phase One. The existing parking lot by Lisbon Street will be retained during Phase One for construction staging and the parking will be eliminated during Phase Two. Anticipated trips, traffic trips are not sufficient to require a traffic movement permit or further traffic review. Street trees have been provided in accordance with the design Lewiston guidelines for the portion of the lot being redeveloped in this phase and a walkway connecting the development to the sidewalk on East Avenue is proposed. Ample amenity space is provided on site and the notation on the site plan requires that 50 square feet of amenity space per dwelling unit be provided once Phase Two takes place, although staff will plan to recheck this during Phase Two to review, excuse me, will check this to re, to review for insurance compliance. The applicant is still finalizing their stormwater design. Once Phase Two is completed, the site will have less impervious surface than it currently has. Since they are phasing the work and revegetating some of the existing impervious area during Phase One, they were required to treat for stormwater. The applicant has requested a condition of approval for stormwater requirements prior to a building permit. Public Works has no issues with this request. This multifamily development is a major subdivision and requires review using Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, Section 5 coordination with state subdivision law, Section 8 additional standards for residential developments, Section 15 post-construction stormwater management standards, and Article 12, Section 15 erosion and sedimentation control. The project is not located in a designed district overlay, so only citywide design guidelines apply from the Design Lewiston Site Plan Review and Design Guidelines standards. The applicant is compliance, is in compliance with these standards except as noted below in staff's comments. There are a number of comments here that Public Works and Fire have provided. Those have since been addressed. Staff has no additional comments at this time. Staff recommends approval of the proposed project with the following conditions. One, that prior to the issuance of a building permit for Phase One, a stormwater management report that addresses the basic standards of Chapter 500 and the requirements of Article 12, Section 15, and Article 13, Section 15 be submitted and approved by Public Works. Two, prior to the signing of the drawings, the comments by Fire be addressed. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall fire a stormwater maintenance guarantee letter with a registry of deeds. Four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant's engineer shall certify that all the improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans, including but not limited to stormwater and utilities, pavements, plantings, and exterior building materials. Mr. Seedom from Ransom is here on behalf of the project.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, no? In that case, I will turn it over to the presenters. If you would state your name and your address for the record as this is being recorded and speak into the microphones to aid in the recording.
My name is David Cedarholm. I'm the senior engineer with Ransom Consulting out of Portland. My address is actually 81 Fox Garrison Road, Lee, New Hampshire. So I work in both Ransom's Portland main office and the Portsmouth, New Hampshire office. So, and...
My name is Silas Levitt and I'm the development project manager for Lewiston Housing and my address is 84 Parsons Road in Portland.
So I'll give you kind of a quick tour of the project. This view right here is from the city's GIS system, shows where the, the school building currently is located on the southern part of the site near Lisbon Street. The northern portion of the site is, is the former playground and playing field and, and the first phase includes actually demolishing the entire school building and retaining some of the pavement. So let me switch over to the plan set. So I'll just give you kind of a quick tour of some of the key sheets in the plan set. This is the existing condition survey. Next, we have a, the demolition plan. And so the, the building here is to be demolished. These are construction gravel, stabilized construction entrances, so the construction vehicles can enter from both Marston Street and, and East Avenue. The forward parking lot is gonna, is to, is proposed to be temporarily retained for Phase Ones to set up construction trailers and provide a claim, kind of a stable laydown area for the construction efforts. This is the Phase One site plan. So once the building is demolished, the entire site will be loaned and ceded. The stabilized construction entrances built will be retained. We are proposing, you can see here, the existing circle is extremely large and it was that, it was that large. It has been that large to enable school buses to enter, circulate around the, the island and then I think the, the school buses would load and unload children here. So we're reducing the size of the circle to an 80-foot diameter circle, which is pretty typical of many of the cul-de-sacs in Lewiston. The drive aisles in the parking lot are 24-foot wide to enable both fire trucks to circulate through, but this is senior housing, so we want to give everybody plenty of room in the drive aisles to back up. And there will be a loading zone here and, and actually, we're, we're providing 23 parking spaces with seven handicap spaces in, in Phase One. There is a sidewalk connecting Lisbon Street. There currently is a sidewalk coming up, I'm sorry, Marston Street from Lisbon Street. And, and so we're actually retaining the same width at the, at the entrance of Marston Street up the remaining portion of Marston Street. Right now, the pavement goes all the way to here. It's really quite a wide expanse of asphalt. And, and then the sidewalk will continue up. There will be a connecting sidewalk to East Avenue. And then we have, in this area, a large infiltrating rain garden with an underdrain that will connect to the existing stormwater system on Lisbon Street. So that will manage actually the stormwater from the parking area. The stormwater from the roof will be managed in two focal point treatment systems here as well as this swale into a focal point system here. And these will, will combine and join and tie into the drainage system on East Avenue. So this Phase One, from a stormwater standpoint, is, is really standalone. We're providing all the treatment necessary and the detention for, for Phase One. So Phase Two, which is really just a, a rough concept, will likely be a building that will connect on to this, this end of Phase One. And, and the concept right now is really the majority of the forefront portion on Lisbon Street to be vegetated at the end of the project, but we still have quite a bit of work to, to work through a site plan for Phase Two. The utilities will connect, we're connecting to the existing sewer on Marston Street here with a, with a pair of manholes. The water will tap into the water main, the 12-inch water main on East Avenue. Gas, there's actually a gas line that comes up from, from, come up Marston Street and we'll extend that up to the building here. And actually, I just met, we had conceptualized the electric service coming across East Avenue, which is where the existing service goes. I met with Central Main Power today and we actually came up with a more reasonable solution that comes directly across East Avenue from here and a, a transformer will be located on this, this end of the building. So there will be, there will be benches and hardscape and a patio in here for guests. And I think that, I think that pretty much covers it for the site plan. Do we have any questions regarding the site plan at this time?
Ms., yeah, Alex?
I'm wondering about the pedestrian pathways. So, you know, obviously I understand having it sort of curved for visual interest, but I, I do wonder, you know, for the residents living there, if any of the businesses that are on Lisbon Street might be attractive and if having the pathway sort of curve off, you know, and go further up East Ave away from Lisbon Street sort of creates an inconvenience for them. You know, frequently, we see like desire paths with landscaping like this where there's a very nice sidewalk and then a very nice cut through the grass where everyone walks.
Sure.
Is there any thought about, you know, and especially given the, the community that the, the housing's meant for, walkability is really important. I saw in the comments, you know, questions about walkability to the Shaw's Plaza, but I wonder about access to the rest of the neighborhood.
Sure. We, we've had lots of conversations about pedestrian path connection up to Shaw's. And, and of course, we're providing this pedestrian connection down to Lisbon Street in this direction. With Phase Two building located here, we're definitely going to end up with a pedestrian connection, you know, closer to Lisbon Street on East Avenue. There's, there's a grade difference of about six feet between where the, where the, the current playground is and this lower portion. And in fact, we've set the elevation of, of the finished floor on Phase One to be 10 feet higher in elevation than the pavement that's currently around the school so that Phase Two could actually, the first floor of Phase Two could be 10 feet lower than the first floor of Phase One. So the Phase Two, second floor would be the same elevation as Phase Two. So, so there will be resident accesses at both those elevations and then certainly this path would likely connect down onto Lisbon Street as part of Phase Two. And that's, and these are conversations, we're, we're going to have more conversations when we get to Phase Two and come for you folks. So, and one of the things I mentioned was where we were, would really like to do a pedestrian connection to Shaw's, which is a bit of a challenge because of the grade difference for one, there's, there's about a 20-foot elevation difference between, you know, this portion of East Avenue and where you access the Shaw's Plaza up here. And there's no sidewalk coming up the side of the entrance to Shaw's Plaza. So, you know, that's something we're going to try to work through as part of Phase Two. We, we looked at continuing a path up this portion, up, you know, the very north end of the site. But there's also, there's not a, there's not an easy sidewalk connection from in front of Shaw's to this corner as well, but, you know, these are, these are things we're still going to look at, but the pedestrian connections are really key.
Gotcha. And, and sort of on the same pages, pedestrian connections, any thoughts about cycling? I know, you know, the streets around there aren't particularly cycling friendly right now, but things are changing. You know, plenty of senior citizens that I know really enjoy cycling, you know, it's a great way to get some exercise and get places without, you know, being as hard on your joints as walking around. Is that, is that being accounted for in this at all?
Well, they, we have kept the grades on the, on the pedestrian paths to 5% or less so that they're ADA compliant. We've got, you know, a nice cul-de-sac that will allow for, for bicycle connections down to Lisbon Street. You know, aside from that, we're providing some bike racks.
Are they indoor bike racks or exterior?
Exterior.
Okay.
Roger?
To be honest, we haven't put, given it a whole lot of thought. We do have a snow storage area over here, which is one of the reasons we've left this, this area green and did not provide parking here. The city, this is a city street, so the city will be plowing the, you know, Marston Street. And I'm assuming that the housing authority, maybe Silas can come to that, will, will be maintaining this, the pedestrian paths during the winter so that, so that residents can walk around.
Anyone else? I, I have to say that as a potential resident of that location, you need to figure out a way to get these people from these buildings to Shaw's.
Yes.
Directly.
Right.
Because they are not going to walk on, and I'm telling you, I wouldn't walk. They're not going to walk on, you know, all the way down to East Avenue and then come all the way up to Shaw's. They're going to cut across the grass and like Alex was saying, you're going to have a straight path of dead grass. So that's just my small comment as a senior citizen. So please continue, since we have no more questions. Go on to the next...
We got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Amy, I...
Also, and I apologize, I didn't get through this whole thing, but trash management, how's that going to work?
We're providing dumpster enclosure over in this corner right here. So it'd be easy access for a dumpster truck to, to back right in and pick it up, so. Phase Two will very likely have an additional dumpster enclosure in the lower portion of the site.
And how will residents get their trash to the dumpster?
Down the sidewalk.
So carrying it, so there's no sort of internal trash, what do you call it, chute?
There's no, there's no trash room inside the building?
No, we haven't made provisions for that, but it's certainly a consideration.
You might want to consider it again, especially come wintertime. You know, it's going to be a little difficult for some of the seniors if they've got a walker or, you know, to, to be taking out their trash when it's icy or to, to the dumpster. So it might be something to have some kind of receptacles inside the building.
Well, we'll certainly bring that up with our architect, Platts Associates.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Yeah.
Continue on with the remaining plans. This is the grading plan that also includes the drainage. As I mentioned before, there's a pretty significant grade between where the existing playing field is and where the school is. We're looking to take advantage of that so that we've got kind of interesting multi-level building so that you can access it both from the upper parking lot and there will certainly need to be a lower parking lot for Phase Two. You can see here, this kidney bean shaped rain garden in this area and then, as I mentioned before, we've got two focal point stormwater systems for the front portion of the roof drain and then, and this portion of the roof will be managed over here as well as stormwater coming off of this bank will all be managed in this, in this focal point and connecting into the existing drain system on East Avenue. And, let's see, so this is the utility plan. This is the proposed sewer connection and, and we've actually worked through these with Public Works, so they, they are, they're fine with this connection for the sewer as well as the fire and water service coming off of the existing 12-inch water main on East Avenue. And, and then I have, we have ability to serve letters from, from Unitil for the gas and, and Central Main Power for the electric. These are really just stormwater details and curbing and pavement details. And, and then we have, you know, more stormwater details. And then here is the lighting plan, so there will be exterior lights on the building pointed downwards. We've got two lamp posts on, in either vegetated island on this, in the parking lot. And, and then we, there are lighted bollards around the, the parking area and the sidewalk. And the veg, the landscaping plan. Now, the, the landscaping plan actually does need to be updated. Our initial plan did not include preserving the circle, so I'll just back up a little bit. You can see here, oops. Going the wrong way. Sorry. So we, we put this kink in the curbing to allow, to kind of retain this 80-foot diameter circle. So we need to update our landscaping plan. So here you see there's, this is an oval rain garden. We now have a kidney-shaped rain garden, so just kind of a minor update there on the landscaping plan. The, the existing street trees over here are all Norway maples and they are not in very good shape, so we're replacing those with more native trees as well as trees down along the sidewalk and, and plantings around the building. The lighting plan. And this is a floor plan from Platts and Associates. So this is oriented 90 degrees from what you were looking at before. This is the, the parking lot would be located here. This is a three-story building, so here we've got three stories that pretty much mirror each other. And the elevation, elevation drawings as well as we do have some...
Some renderings.
Some renderings.
I have a question.
Sure.
You go back to one of the floor plans, they're all, all three floors look about the same. What about laundry facilities? Do they have laundry facilities in the apartments or do they, you have a laundry room? I didn't see it on, on the three floors.
Yeah, there's laundry facilities in building, I believe on the second and third floors.
On the second floor?
Second and third.
Oh, second and third.
Yeah, so you can see, it's right in the middle of the building next to the stairwell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so people on the first floor have to go up like there's an elevator? Okay, all right. I, I missed it when I...
Mm-hmm.
And Alex?
So another, another bicycle comment. So, yeah, having, having indoor storage on that first floor, I noticed there is, if we go back, there is a room labeled storage and I don't know if that's storage for the management of the property or, or storage for the residents, but...
Keep going the wrong way here.
You know, I'd encourage you to incorporate storage for bicycles again.
Good idea.
And especially, you know, minor detail, but making it able for folks to charge an electric bicycle. A lot of older folks really enjoy those. Overall, with the project, something I, I wonder about, you know, thinking about like my parents who, you know, they live on the West Coast, but they, you know, they could live in something like this, is that, you know, you have a place to live, but in terms of having community and other things to do that are accessible and nearby, it's kind of challenging, given the site, you know, the, the challenge of getting up to Shaw's. And I completely agree with Lucy that like, yeah, being able to get groceries is going to be very important, but, you know, giving folks the opportunity to do things really close by where they don't need to drive, I think is really important. So something I'd wonder about for the landscape plan is providing some flexibility in that so that community garden space could be put in, whether that's, you know, for vegetables or for flowers or just, you know, something that you can take care of and do, something that's like less prescribed. I think having a lot of elevation change and gradient change would be probably challenging for this community to sort of turn grass into something else, right? That would require a lot of earth moving and, you know, sort of challenging conditions. So utilizing any south exposure, flat spaces and trying to make it easy to convert that from lawn into, into garden space, I think would be really important. Or maybe even start out with it being garden space from the get-go.
Yeah, I agree, but the other thing is if you're going to have garden space, make it elevated.
Yeah.
Because people, people like me, we can't kneel down anymore.
Sure.
To work in the garden. We want to, but we can't.
Yeah.
So, you know, the height change might work well for that because you can just cut, cut and then, and then have the gardens at waist level.
Great idea.
So that might, you know, they might incorporate it perhaps in Phase Two. I think that might be more practical to see that that is increased or included in, in the second phase where you, you've got a lot more room to, to work with.
Right, yeah.
Amy, did you have your hand up?
Just similarly with this sort of target market, you know, my, my dad is 94, he's still living alone. So just in terms of convenience for people aging in place, I would just encourage you to think about in-unit laundry and dishwashers so that they've got the amenities so they don't need to leave their apartment in order to do sort of the normal housekeeping chores that are already become challenging when people get older. I know there's not a ton of space in these, but, you know, I've remodeled many apartments with the dishwasher underneath the sink, I'm sorry, the washing machine underneath a kitchen counter, so I just encourage you guys to think about that, given who, who this is meant to serve.
Roger?
No?
Anyone else have any questions? Lucy? Yes, Lee?
So just thinking in terms of community and lifestyle, so I saw the community room on the first floor. Do you have a sense of the capacity there? It says 100 square feet. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a...
604 square feet.
Yeah, 604 square feet, yeah.
Okay. So, how many bodies? I'm just thinking about the opportunity for activities and gatherings. Do you have a sense?
I wish our architect was here.
Sure, sure.
Yep, yeah, she had to miss this because of Yankupur. So I don't know the square footage calculations off the top of my head for how many people you'd be able to fit in the room. But I would assume it would be a sizable portion of the building's population. And in general, you know, Lewiston Housing Authority has like residents, resident care coordinators for a building who are able to kind of work with residents and do some level of social engagement on stuff like that.
Sure, thank you.
Alex?
Oh, Joshua's before me.
Yes, Josh.
Just had a quick question about the outdoor storage. So how does, how does that space work? You'd mentioned that there was storage adjacent to the parking. Am I correct on that or no?
No.
There's no outdoor storage at all?
No.
No.
There's that dumpster.
Right, okay.
Right.
Okay, Alex.
Not sure how the utility situation is going to work for the residents, given the fact that this has a flat roof and, you know, sort of larger statewide climate goals, things like that. Looking at rooftop solar or something like that, I think could be interesting at the site, especially, I don't know if it's already incorporated.
Yes, yeah, it it's not on this set of floor plans, but it's something that we've discussed with Platts and it's in the set of floor plans that we submitted to Main Housing for the Lytec deal is that there's going to be a capability for installation of rooftop solar in the future.
Okay, yeah, anything to help fix energy costs for residents, I think would be wonderful.
Yeah, and and the way that we were looking at the rents and utility allowances and that sort of thing, this building would be, you know, the owner would pay for resident utilities.
Okay, anyone else?
So I want to understand that, so the utilities aren't split?
The Lehatic slash Lewiston Housing Authority would cover the utilities for the residents.
Okay, what's the heating system?
It's going to be all electric, I believe.
So heat pumps and backup electric baseboard? I mean, just curious.
I don't know if we've gotten that far in working out what exactly the specifics are going to be, but something like that, yeah.
Again, I would encourage you to split the utilities if you can. People can reset their own circuit breakers, they can pay their own bills. It gets to be a real issue in these bigger buildings to keep the climate control consistent and comfortable for everybody.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, in this case, I will be opening it up to the public. If you wish to speak for or against this project, please step up to the podium, give your name, your address, and you will have three minutes to to say your piece. And you can't come back, you have one one shot, three minutes, okay? So I'm opening it up to the public at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this project? Please step up.
And specifically, you can you can say one piece on this project, you can also say a
Yeah, yeah, you can you can say your piece on this project and you can say your piece on another project, but this, three minutes on this project. So going once, if you're going to speak, go to the podium, please, and give your name and address.
My name is Skip Estes. I live at 62 Spring Street in Auburn. It's a billet building that's owned by Auburn Housing Authority. But I've been following this since I first heard about it over a year ago. This is something I'm very interested in and hopefully I can get one of these units. I would like to find out more information about the square footage of the units, how many bedrooms.
This will all come out later. This is this is they're one-bedroom apartments in this case. I can tell you from the plans.
They're all one-bedrooms?
Yes. Okay.
The, you have large one-bedrooms.
Come on, any anything else, sir?
Well, after seeing the rendition, yeah, it looks like a nice building and I'm definitely interested in it and my name is on a list with Lewiston Housing.
Okay.
So.
All right, that's all that we can we there's nothing we can do about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this project? In that case, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Are there any, yes, Roger?
Is there a timeline between Phase One and Phase Two?
The timeline would be once we get funding for Phase One, we would be applying for Phase Two funding in the subsequent year. So if we just applied for the 9% Lytec round for Phase One, we'll know in November whether that is funded. Then we'll know if it's not funded, if we can apply for the subsequent 4% funding round. So we'll know by, you know, February or March whether Phase One is funded and can proceed. And then if it's funded this year, we would be applying for 9% funding for Phase Two in the next funding round. So if Phase One is funded in this 9% funding round, we would be applying for funding for Phase Two in the 9% funding round for in 2024. But whenever, it it's just going to follow on year after year until we can build to capacity of the site.
So we're looking possibly at two-year, three-year timeframe?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alex?
One other amenity comment. If you look at the vehicle market in the U.S., there is a transition happening towards electric vehicles. I don't think it makes sense for you to put in charging infrastructure for them now, but that is typically, I'm wearing my other professional hat here, typically a very high cost, especially in multifamily buildings. So putting in conduit runs while you're building the parking lot is something I'd encourage you to take a look at. Just just building that in now will save a lot of headache later and make it accessible for folks in the future.
All right, and yes, Josh?
The only thing I would I would bring up is, you know, obviously, I don't think it's a deal breaker concerning the exterior storage, but it may be something that you may want to be flexible on or consider for the future. Folks do have things like kayaks, for instance. I know all plenty of seniors, actually, that that's what they do on the weekends. So it's just a thought as far as, I think it'd be very awkward to like try to bring your eight-foot kayak into your apartment, so.
Really? Okay, all right, anything? Amy?
So I just want to say I'm super excited about this. I think it's going to be a great project, we really need it. But it feels to me like this design happened without input from the kind of people who will be living there, just because of the the storage, washers and dryers, dishwasher, walking paths. So I, you know, again, not a deal breaker, but I really encourage you to look into best practices and think about how a 90-year-old is going to live and enjoy this housing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion that the application submitted by Lewiston Housing Authority and Lewiston Auburn Area Housing Development Corporation for a new three-story apartment building containing 44 residential units at 860 Lisbon Street meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria and Section 5 coordination with state subdivision law, and that development and subdivision approval be granted with the following conditions: that prior to the issuance of building permits for Phase One, a stormwater management report that addresses the basic standards of Chapter 500 and the requirements of Article 12, excuse me, Section 15 and Article 13, Section 15 be submitted and approved by Public Works; that prior to the signing of the drawings, the the comment by fire be addressed; prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall file a stormwater maintenance guarantee letter with the Registry of Deeds; and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant's engineer shall certify that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans, including but not limited to stormwater and utilities, pavements, plantings, and exterior building materials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Roger. Any further discussion from the members of the board? And then I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Negin?
Yes.
Michael Marcott?
Epstein.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
And hopefully you'll you'll get money for Phase Two as well.
We'll get working on it.
Okay, in that case, we're going to go to the second public hearing. A referral for the City Council, which initiated a contract zoning for 128 Farwell Street and 255 East Avenue, submitted by GRE LLC for the planning board to send a recommendation back to the City Council. Mr. Hediger.
In October of 2022, these properties proposed to be straight rezoned to community business as part of a larger effort to expand the depth of the zoning district along Lewiston's major arterials, Sabates, Lisbon, and Main Streets. The community business district allows for a variety of residential and non-residential uses, and part of that rezoning effort was to provide more opportunities for multifamily housing. It was known at the time that GRE was interested in developing these lots with multifamily dwellings and accessory uses. Upon hearing concerns from the neighbors, the planning board sent a recommendation to the City Council to move forward with the zoning map amendments for the section of Sabates Street, but to keep the property at 128 Farwell and 255 East Avenue, Neighborhood Conservation A. On October 18th, the City Council, needing a supermajority to overturn the board's recommendation of not including GRE's properties, voted 6-1 to adopt the zoning amendments of this area, including 128 Farwell and 244 East Avenue to be zoned community business, with two added conditions: that the property may not have any road or driveway access to Charles and that a 20-foot setback be required for rear property lines abutting Charles Street properties. It was later learned from the city attorney that any additional conditions added specifically to a property such as those recommended by the council must be considered as either as either a conditional or contract rezoning. Doing so requires a hearing with the planning board and a specific agreement with the owner of the property with conditions clearly noted. Given this guidance, the second reading on November 1st, the council voted 7-0 to adopt a zoning map amendment for this area of Sabates Street and not to include 128 Farwell and 255 East Avenue. This was followed by a 4-3 vote to refer the matter to the planning board, recommending that a contract rezoning be considered at the owner's discretion. GRE continues to express interest in developing the lot with residential uses and does not anticipate any non-residential development to occur on site unless supportive of the residential development. Given market fluctuations when this lot may be developed is not certain, however, their preference would be to have the flexibility as to the type and type and density of residential uses allowed on this property, along with possible accessory non-residential uses. Providing a wide range of residential uses use types affords the owner the ability to develop the lot based upon market demand. The non-residential uses proposed are seen as complementary to residential development being used as currently allowed in the underlying NCA district or the abutting CB district. The contract zone provides the owner the ability to develop the lot utilizing the existing NCA space and bulk standards with some exceptions. The net lot area would be increased from 5,000 square feet to 1,500 square feet. This large differential is primarily because the NCA does not allow multifamily. Based upon the total acreage, the difference is the availability to develop 95 single-family dwellings versus 317 multifamily units. These numbers are estimates recognizing the area will be consumed by roads, stormwater improvements, and open space. The maximum height of structures would be 75 feet. Setbacks would remain the same except for with a lot abuts Charles Street properties and Farwell Street. The setback along Charles Street would be 45 feet and 25 feet along Farwell Street. There's a need for housing types of all housing of all types in Lewiston. Over the last 15 months, both the planning board and the City Council have worked on amendments to provide more opportunities for housing and economic development. The post-contract zone for this property provides yet another opportunity for this to occur. The contract zone identifies consistencies with the comprehensive plan. This includes the area being identified as an intended growth sector. These areas are largely undeveloped but are intended for growth and substantial mixed-use development by virtue of proximity to existing or planned infrastructure, a regional thoroughfare and/or transit. Complete neighborhoods that include both existing and new residential housing as well as some mixed-use development are appropriate. This area includes the the city's current community business zone as well as new centers for walkable neighborhood development, portions of which should be rezoned as character-based districts. The location of the slot matches this description, being surrounded by existing utility infrastructure, located on my major arterials, and located within 200 feet of a bus route. The developer envisages residential development with mixed-use development. This development is ideal, this lot is ideal for infill development. These reasons alone warrant consideration of rezoning the property. Concerns were raised in 2022 about existing and proposed traffic in the area. The city has since hired a consultant to look at the capacity of the existing road work, issues that currently exist, and what might overall be done to address concerns and what possibly to expect from the development of this lot. Overall, the filings indicate that the assumed development would not significantly impact operations in the surrounding area. However, there are intersections currently in the study area with existing capacity deficiencies. While the development will increase volume at these intersections, the volume is generally not anticipated to dissipate, the volume is generally anticipated to dissipate throughout the area. When situations like this exist, developments are not necessarily required to implement mitigation since the pre- and post-bill conditions would be expected to be similar. However, a developer would still be fully responsible to ensure the proposed site offers safe access to both site users and the traveling public and meet all applicable state, city, and state standards. Specific site trip distribution and analysis will be required by the applicant to understand the full effect of the development. This typically occurs upon the dismissal of a development review application, where more detailed analysis is provided by the applicant, specific to the uses being proposed. In this case, development of the lot would be subject to holding a public hearing and approval from the planning board. Staff understands concerns raised by the property owners in the neighborhood. Any development of this lot will result in the loss of vacant property and an increase in traffic. However, this lot is also located in an ideal location for residential infill development. It's located on roads that already experience higher volumes of traffic. The lot is located to an existing is located adjacent to existing utility infrastructure, is in walking distance of schools, retail, medical, a college, bus routes, and personal services. While the lot abuts a single-family district, it also abuts a developed commercial district with an existing multifamily development. Staff recognizes traffic issues exist, however, an increase in traffic is allowed with possible mitigation, and the comprehensive plan supports rezoning of this kind in the area to provide more housing and mixed opportunities. So with that, staff's recommending that the board do consider a contract zone tonight. Mr. Gatto is here on behalf of their request for the contract zone.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody on the board that has any questions for staff? Mr. Marcott?
For staff, I think there are a couple of typos which were read as typed. The fourth paragraph down on the first page, I think the 244 East Avenue should have been 255.
Correct.
And on the second page, third paragraph down, it said increased from 5,000 square feet to 1,500.
Yeah.
Seems like a reduction.
Yeah, you're right. You're right, we're the proposal is to decrease the density or, excuse me, decrease the number but increase the density. So right now it's 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The proposal is to go to 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it for staff.
Okay, I have one. What college am I walking to from that property?
Bates College, it's a quarter mile away.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
By George, okay. All right, anyone else on the board have any questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Gatto, if you would like to come up and give us your presentation.
I can find my pen at work, so.
Well, you can have mine if you if you can't find yours.
Good evening, my name is Mike Gatto, here with Dave Genren and Steve Harris from GRE. I guess a couple of things that I want to make sure that the board is aware of in the staff report. David is using, when he talks about area of the lot, he's using the tax records. We've actually had a survey of the property, it's a little bit larger, it's 11.06 acres instead of 10.95. So if you use the density calculations, you could potentially get as many as 321 units. The setback from Charles Street is 45 as as David has suggested, but the setback from Farwell, I believe, is 40.
Not 25.
30 plus 10, if you read note 30. We questioned that when we met to talk about it, so I just, again, I want to make sure that you folks are aware.
Okay.
David's right that there is, single-family density would be 95 units or 96 with the survey number of acreage. We have a single-family subdivision schematic for the lot and we can only fit 31, 37, yeah, 37 single-family homes because your ordinance requires 75 by 100-foot lots, even though the density is 5,000. So to get to 5,000, the single-family, you'd have to do a condo or Apple Valley or something like that. I guess I want to point out for you and the public that the traffic study you do have in the executive summary, you'll find that they did the traffic study based on 199 trips. That translates to 475 apartment units from the site. Or 37,000 square feet of commercial activity. With that, I suspect, well, I guess I'll talk a little With that, I suspect, well, I guess I'll talk a little bit. I didn't think we were doing this zoning presentation. I thought this was a council and staff process, but when they asked me to provide criteria for the contract zoning, I provided the charts and the ideas of things that we might want on that. Since this was posed in '22 to be CB, since your comprehensive plan, as I read it and as staff reads it, recommends that this be a multi-use and CB would be the best fit, I looked at this going from CB-type uses to our contract, bringing down some of the CB activities that are allowed. So that's why you'll see other things in the zone requests, because I was trying to look at what other opportunities you might have on the site if you were CB and you were a transition lot. I think this site, ever since Hanifet had moved away from this site in 1990, has been the most, or was the most developable piece of land in the city with the frontage that Hanifet occupied and this back lot, but never, nobody could ever make it work because of the zoning on this piece didn't help that front lot. So it's a nice site. It's really developable from the environmental issues. We now know there are traffic issues. The neighborhood was very correct that there are traffic issues. Traffic engineer's gone through the solutions or potential solutions for that and has even given you some estimated cost. So with that, I'll answer any questions, and I assume I'll be back to after comments from the public if you want me to.
All right. Questions from the board for the presenter? Yes, Michael.
I was curious as to which portion of the perimeter that you'd be looking for ingress and egress through the property.
The original schematics for the property showed access to East Avenue and Farwell. Given the traffic study that I've read, it's likely that East Avenue is not going to be able to be used.
That was my concern.
So you kind of need to make sure that we provide at least two points of access for this size of a development. So that leaves you Farwell and Charles Street. And there may be other options that you look at, there may be other options available, but Charles Street may need to be emergency access only, may need to be gated and emergency access only for this type of project.
There would be no access to Sabata Street?
There is no access now, and that's the problem.
Not a direct access, but, and I forget the name of the street that comes off of Sabata Street.
You mean where Meadowview is?
Yeah, where Meadowview is.
Spofford.
Spofford Street ends and doesn't connect to our project.
It doesn't, okay, you'd have to cross Meadowview to get there.
That would be one potential option, yeah. That would be one potential option.
I didn't realize that Spofford Street stopped at a certain point, okay.
Yeah, it stops inside of Meadowview. I think it just goes into a cul-de-sac, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think it goes into, the aerial photo there is there, there is like a cul-de-sac. I don't, it looks like that cul-de-sac may actually be part of the Lewiston Housing Project. Okay, you know, again, we'd have to do more work to figure that out. Why I said this was one of the most developable pieces of land that was looked at in the city of Lewiston in the 90s was that if you could have tied your access to the gas station that was out front and the building was out front, and tie it to where the car wash is today, that would have been the ideal situation for this site to be developed.
Right.
And then you could have put more buffer to Charles Street and Farwell Street, and you could have put all that traffic out onto a four-lane highway.
Right.
Because the zoning wasn't changed in the 90s, okay, it's been this for a long time, the front piece ended up selling to the gas station, and now it's developed.
Right.
So I don't know that you could make a development work with their circulation because of all the activities they have in their site.
Right.
So your options are Charles Street for potential emergency, Farwell Street, which the study says backs up. So you've got some issues that we can resolve if we get the types of uses and the project that we want. We, and Dave, has no interest in doing anything other than multifamily at this point, is what he's wanted to do since 2017, 2018, when he bought this site. We had a neighborhood meeting in 2018 and talked with the neighborhood, and we've just not proceeded forward because of the cost of this process, so.
Thank you.
What site, multifamily?
If we get the density we're asking for, we'll maximize the site, 325, 321 units. You know, can I fit them all in with parking and everything else? To be determined.
Right.
We have very little, we have grades, but we have very little, you know, problems environmentally. There's a little bit of white line in one corner. Other than that, the site's almost completely developable. So I think we can make that number of units work, two or three buildings.
You mentioned access from Charles Street. Where on Charles Street?
We have a 50-foot strip, right there with the S's on Charles Street, yeah.
Okay.
And again, it's not our intent to access Charles Street. I would only access Charles Street if we were forced to by the traffic engineers. You know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've solved a lot of traffic issues in my career. And once we understand and get a more detailed traffic study, we'll know how to access the site and we'll figure out the best way to do that.
Okay.
But we need the zoning before we even move forward on that.
Right.
So that's why we're here, and why we're going to the council.
Okay. Lee?
Sure. Just to be clear, you answered some of the density questions, so thank you. You mentioned it's what, 11.06?
Yeah, 11.06 acres.
But the East Ave didn't change, so that's still, what, .37 acres?
No, the total.
Oh, so the total.
Total of the two lots.
Got it.
Okay, total. So it's only, it's only like a tenth of an acre larger, I think.
I didn't realize.
It's 10.95 to 11.06.
Okay.
It's 11 hundreds of an acre larger. It does make units at the square footage you were looking at, okay?
Thank you. Alex?
Something I wonder about, you know, with the intention to develop it as multifamily, is the character of that development, and I think, I would imagine that that's probably a concern for the surrounding neighborhood, is the thought that it's going to be a little more sort of, you know, apartment buildings in a field of grass with, you know, sort of separate buildings? Or to maximize the space, is it going to be more like a neighborhood with smaller detached buildings?
No, it's going to be, it's going to be probably three, you know, again, we don't know for sure.
Of course.
We still have to do design work, but it's going to be more like, one of the schematics I had had two buildings in it, and the rest of it was all green space. It's more going to be more like at this density, maybe three, maybe go to four, but there's going to be a lot of open space on the site left when we're done.
Got it, okay. You know, traffic aside, I wonder, you know, kids live in a neighborhood, people need to be able to walk around, that's part of the reason why we like residential neighborhoods. Have you started thinking about how you're going to incorporate that into the project? You know, even with the restrictions around vehicle access, that doesn't mean you have restrictions around pedestrian access or space to, you know, parkland, like you're sort of saying.
I think you're jumping ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, when they come back for, with a development, with something, then those questions will be more pertinent, I think.
We have intentionally not invested because we're not certain that this is going to get rezoned.
Got it.
We want it rezoned. If it's not rezoned, I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with an architect. We're going to design a building, and it's going to get built. Whether it gets built on this site or somewhere else is the question. My client wants to do a multifamily project. It was good sitting through the first meeting here tonight. We touched each other a couple of times, we're going to think about that, we're going to think about that, we're going to think about that. But in terms of planning on this site, we have, we're not going to waste money on planning for something that can't be done.
Understood.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anybody else? Okay. In that case, I will open it up to the public. Again, if you wish to speak for or against the project, please step to the podium and give your name and address, and you have three minutes to make your case. So I'm opening up to the public.
I'm Chris LaChapelle. I live at 120 Farwell Street. That's the corner of Charles and Farwell. I frequently see traffic backed all the way up from Sabata Street past my house, just to give clarity of how bad traffic gets in that neighborhood. I don't see how you're going to negate that with another 321 units potentially. Another thought here is a five-story building in this neighborhood with nothing else like that at all in the community business or residential zone, which it is currently, is kind of a bit far-fetched for what we would want as residents in that neighborhood, I think. I don't want bright lights from a fifth story shining on my house over the trees. That exists because you're taller than that. I think that's just way excessive for the intended development, which I'll speak to. You guys have talked about this legacy plan. We're actually kind of on the cusp, I would say, with the G2 controlled growth sector, which states that the residential zone of Neighborhood Conservation A is in, which is what this is currently zoned for. I'll also state too, the development that they have proposed when the legacy zoning plan was built, was that this was actually intended to possibly be urban farming with a farm stand year-round, seven acres of farming. It's great to provide additional housing, I know we need it, but I think this size and this space is inappropriate. There's school kids that walk this street every day. I don't think traffic coming in and out of Farwell Street on that walk is necessarily safe. You're on a blind curve, there's already been vehicle rollovers. And to speak with the Charles Street, 45-feet buffer is less than the height of the building. So I mean, I don't see how that this is appropriate. And there's not even a guarantee that that's what you're going to do. This is just based on market fluctuations. So there's no stability to this plan other than word of mouth. There's no plan, there's no, like, the Martell School is very laid out, very transparent. I think they did a good job of that. This is also based on the character districts. Existing stable, built-out, conventional residential neighborhoods would not be included in proposed character districts. Current conventional zoning standards would continue to apply to these neighborhoods. This is all from the legacy plan. This says, you know, neighborhoods are the backbone of the community. Farwell Street is my neighborhood. I believe it's very important to keep it much like it is. I'd love to see development, but you know, like the Martell, you're talking 20 units per acre.
Thank you.
And this is 30, so.
Hi, my name's Sharon Bowman, I live on Charles Street, 50 Charles Street. So where they're proposing an emergency, if they can't get the access to the Farwell lot that they need, that entrance would be two lots from where I live.
Okay.
Which has been fought, and which the other neighbors were here, but they fought this years ago because they wanted to put a roadway in there. I guess there is roadway on paperwork, and they hired attorneys, and it was shot down. They were not allowed. In the last meeting we were at, I believe they said that that's still held, that that was not feasible to do.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that you know that, that you've heard that.
Okay.
That's not, it looks like it's a level lot. It also is like the Martell School lot. It's very low on the Farwell end, up towards the East Avenue and directly right behind my house. When it rains, my yard gets flooded because the height of that property right there comes right down into my yard. So there's definitely, you know, some drainage issues that will need to be addressed, and what's being, it's not actually being proposed tonight, it's just being asked for rezoning. But for us to feel comfortable in the neighborhood, we'd like to hear something more concrete as what, you know, we don't want a five-foot, not a five-foot, but a five-story building directly behind my house. Like you said, the lights and whatnot, it just takes away from the whole neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes.
I don't know if I count as public or not. I'm staff, I'm Lincoln Jeffers Development Director for the city.
This is just public, so.
So this is the appropriate time.
You're public.
Appropriate time. This site has been, talked to admin with the city over 20 years. This site has been recognized as a very developable site for a long time. Dave, and I've seen multiple iterations come through. Mr. Gendrons is the most serious of those. As he said, he first had a public meeting in 2018 about this at the Farwell School. There was a lot of feedback. Some of the people who've spoken tonight probably spoke at that meeting. I think they have listened carefully to the concerns of the neighbors. They've done their best to address those concerns. We don't have a full-blown proposal yet, but they have done a lot of conceptual thoughts, ideas, generation that they have gone through. Traffic had been a major issue at the time. We've had a traffic study done. That's, yeah, there are some failing or not, not great intersections, but this project, even at full buildout, would not have a totally negative impact upon those. It'll simply be more of the same, you might have an extra car or two in front of you.
Could you state your address?
My address, my personal address is 61 Pleasant Hill Road, Freeport, Maine.
Thank you.
Been working here, that's where I sleep at night, this is where I live.
This is where you live.
This is what it comes down to.
I realize that.
[laughing]
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I just think they have done their best to really address these concerns. This has been through various rezoning initiatives. I would encourage the board to support it and allow this to take the next step where it's full design, some of the issues that have been raised tonight, really come back to during development review. They're not at the stage where they can even invest. Tends if not approaching $100,000 that it takes to develop plans. So with that, I would encourage support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a statement?
Hey, my name is Crystal LaChapelle. I reside at 120 Farwell Street in Lewiston. I just want to give a little perspective. I'm not sure if people are familiar with the Hartley Block on Lisbon Street. It's a five-story multifamily building. It consists of 64 units in that building, and that just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective when they're talking of 320, 370, whatever that crazy number was. You know, that size building, imagine that times four or five, or add two more stories on top of it. Would you want that right outside of your house? You know, a one-story dwelling peering down over it. So just to give a little perspective from, you know, to you guys, kind of what that looks like, so you can, you know, wrap your mind around that, so. That's all I wanted to give, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Harvey. I live at 120.
Please speak a little louder, Donna.
My name is Donna Harvey, and I reside at 153 Farwell Street, directly in front of the field, and I mean direct. So if there is a road, it's going to come out off Farwell Street, it has to be either by Meadowview or it's by Charles Street corner. It's going to be directly in front of my house. I have a 93-year-old mother that lives with us. She, if ever needs to get out at 4, between 3:30 and 5, for an emergency, she will not make it because the traffic is backed up, passed to their house on Farwell Street. I wasn't going to speak because it makes me nervous, but I just need you to realize that what you're doing to our neighborhood, would you like it done to your neighborhood? If you had that space in front of your house, or in behind it, or if that was your backyard, would you want that there? It's taking away from our beauty, it's taking away from, there's deer, everything that's there. And it's hard to see that go away because we are overpopulated, and I don't feel it's fair that we, in our neighborhood, have to take that brunt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Okay, this time I'm going to close it to, from the public portion and bring it back to the board. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Michael?
Question for Mr. Gatto. The reference to-
Question for Mr. Gatto. The reference to five stories, I guess I didn't read that or hear it earlier, but I do see 75 feet. That constitutes five stories, potentially?
I'm not an architect, but I would say you could definitely get five stories with 75 feet. You might even get six.
Really? Because one of my concerns-
Well, the prior building was 10-foot, three-four floors. Okay, so, 10-foot, the prior project-
10-foot floors, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, as you go higher, the floors will have to spread more.
Good, because I remembered my other question. But one of my concerns with the project that was being discussed a few years back on the corners of Webster and East Avenue was the height and how high the buildings would be in relation to the perimeter neighborhood from, I forget the names of the streets, Boston Avenue and then the side street that goes back to Webster. So, that was a concern of mine back then on that one. So, therefore, it remains with what may happen here. Tonight, obviously, is a contract zone. It's not the development review.
Well, if I may answer, our point with heights is if we can go up, we can push the buildings closer to Lisbon, Sabata Street, I'm sorry. So, we can push the buildings farther away from the neighborhood.
Oh, okay, so it'd be closer to Sabata?
If you go height, you can reduce the footprint. You can leave more green space. We don't have a building design yet, folks, okay? But the height was, I think there was a project downtown where they had the stuff spread out, and they decided that they were gonna condense the footprint and go higher. And that's what we were contemplating doing, is get it farther away from the neighborhood.
Okay, and the other question was, the nature of the residence would be all ages?
We are not making any commitments, but our plan has always been to do a senior 55-plus. And that's what we are gonna struggle and do our plan for. It won't be what you're seeing tonight. This is gonna be market rate, and it would likely have some of the things that you were talking about.
The amenities that we're-
The amenities that you're looking for, washer and dryer in the-
The units.
Two-bedroom and other things. But this is gonna be market rate.
Market rate.
But the older the resident, the less intense the issues.
Right, right. We're not necessarily interested in owning a family project. And, I mean, Dave, everybody, well, most people know Dave Gendron, and he probably owns the first building he ever bought, still, okay? So, it's something he's big in, building for his family, for the next generation. So, we're gonna own it.
Okay, great. All right. Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? Okay, Roger has a comment?
Mike, should we approve the contract zone tonight? You're gonna be meeting with the architect as far as design on the buildings. Are those gonna be flexible as far as the height is concerned? In other words, if we decide that three stories would be maximum versus five? Or can you give us alternate plan?
We're doing a design that is gonna be something that we can use at multiple sites, okay, in multiple cities, because we own properties in multiple cities. We're doing it one that can be up to six stories and maybe four stories. But our request here tonight is for the height that allows a higher building so that we can give more green space. If you change the height on the contract zone, then we'll consider whether or not we build to that height or not, you know? I'm sorry to be not concise, but we haven't done the design yet.
Right.
But we've decided to go forward with the design because we know we can use it for multiple properties.
I have a question actually for staff. Metalview, how tall are those buildings? Like, how many stories are they?
Two. There are only two. Okay. In that case, I'll entertain them again.
I just want to state, you know, we're looking at a situation where we're net-negative housing units for basically two decades at this point. And I completely understand the concerns of the residents. I have a project like this that unfortunately didn't actually materialize in my neighborhood, but had it. Possibly some of the issues that I have with traffic in my neighborhood could have been addressed from the tax base. One of the things I think about, I think, is that Gendron didn't create the traffic problem, and neither did the residents. This is a 40-plus-year issue with Main DOT putting in street plans that we all have to deal with. We've got folks that are going to Farwell School from other communities, driving in every day, creating traffic problems. We've got a cutaway that connects Webster to Sabata Street Russell. Those things absolutely need to be fixed. No matter what happens, those things need to be fixed. They're not gonna make your neighborhood safer, you know? And it's just one of those things that, I mean, I can feel the concern, but I also think that, you know, residential housing is so important in our community right now. It's really difficult to look at any project and say, especially a market-rate project that won't put pressure on your schools if it's for 50-plus, and say it's a bad idea. So, just one of those.
I will entertain a motion.
Take a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the request by GRE LLC for a contract zone amendment for the property located at 128 Farwell and 255 East Avenue. 255 East Avenue, correct?
Yes, yeah.
From the, I'm remembering the previous-
It was 244, you corrected.
255 East Avenue from the Neighborhood Conservation A NCA zoning to a contract zoning district with limitations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the board?
I ask David a question.
Certainly.
David, on the contract zone, can we stipulate limitations now, or do we have to wait till later?
Well, I guess it depends on what kind of stipulation you're talking about.
In other words, the thing is, is that if we say, all right, we're gonna limit the height of the building to three stories instead of five.
This would be your opportunity to do that.
Can that be done at a future time?
No. I mean, if you, if the rezoning gets approved by the council, then the applicant has the ability to design a building up to 75 feet. They come back with a building at 75 feet, and the board says, "We don't like that." It's too late at that point. They will admit the space and bulk requirements at that time. So-
It's difficult because we don't know what size building they're gonna come up with.
Right, no.
Right. And to their point, I mean, part of the reason they're asking for the height is that, the thought is that it would create more open space out there. And potentially, the building might be built further away from the Charles Street side. Granted, the Charles Street side at this point, because we worked with the applicant to try to come up with conditions knowing what they were gonna be, something that we could hopefully agree upon coming to you folks tonight. So, right now, it would be a 45-foot setback from Charles Street. And while there's no guarantee right now, the conversations we've had is that it will likely be further than 45 feet from the property line. But if you're looking for something more definitive, your opportunity is this evening to include that as a condition.
Michael?
I have a question for staff on the same matter. We make our recommendation tonight to the City Council. Can the council make those adjustments themselves?
So, that's sort of where it was last time, as far as they started placing conditions on there. And I think it's gonna, I think it depends, is the answer. If it's a substantive change that the council is looking to do, then it should be coming back to you folks. Right. If I, if they, let's say they reduce the height. It got approved this evening at 75 feet in the council, and the council said, "No, we think it should be 50 feet." I don't think that's a substantive change necessarily. That's a more restrictive change. If they said, "Let's go to 100," that would be the opposite of what we're talking about. If they wanted to make things, you know, any more forgiving, potentially, I would suggest that comes back to you in this hearing process would start again.
So, if it's not a substantive change, the neighbors should be coming to the council meeting when this is on the agenda and potentially get an adjustment at that time.
Right. You folks have the ability to suggest a change tonight. They could, the council has the ability to make a change as well.
I'm not interested in suggesting a change tonight because I really like the arguments for more green space closer to Sabata Street, which I think would kind of ameliate the impact that's being discussed.
I agree with Michael. So, I'm not willing to put any conditions, any further conditions.
No, I really-
You're all set?
I'm all set. I just, you know-
Okay, so if we're all set, everybody's all set, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagene?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes. So, David, when is this being presented to the council?
Right. So, for the benefit of the public that's here tonight, or anyone who's not here tonight, this is scheduled to go to the council on the next Tuesday night at 7:00 in here. And folks may remember that's a two-step process, right? So, there's a first reading and a second reading. So, the second reading would be, I'm looking at the wrong month, October 3rd and then October 17th. So, I would encourage you folks to attend that meeting and, you know, express any concerns you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, everyone, and good luck. Have fun designing. And remember, washer-dryers, dishwashers, paths. I know you did.
Outside garden spots.
Outside garden spots that are raised beds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Walk-in showers.
Yeah, walk-in showers, no bathtubs. Thank you. All right. Other business? David, do you have any other business?
I don't have any other business.
Okay, Alex has other business. He asked if he could bring something up.
So, in our last joint session with the City Council, the topic of mobile food units, food trucks came up. There was some desire by the room to have staff rewrite the current ordinance to allow for vendors to place their mobile food unit close to a restaurant, or closer than 100 feet allowed with permission of the restaurant. And that got me thinking, well, are there other things in here that perhaps aren't so conducive to operating a successful food truck in the city? And I just went through and marked up a copy. So, I'm wondering if we'd consider it, even though it's not, you know, a matter of life or death here, but I think everyone seems to like food. Food trucks are an interesting way to get food into a city. They can really complement restaurants. And I think if we updated our codes around this, we could maybe make it a little bit better. For example, we don't allow for food trucks or mobile food vending units in city parks, but wouldn't everyone like to get an ice cream at Smart Pain Park in the summertime, or a nice sandwich or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that might be a good consideration. So, you've marked it up with your suggestions. Perhaps you could share it, share the marked-up copy with staff, and you can, staff can bring it up?
Yeah.
At a future meeting?
Yeah, as Alex said, it's not necessarily on our hit parade right now, but it is something that I think-
It's complimentary to some of the other things we're doing.
Right, exactly. And certainly, we can take a look at that. We can share it with you folks.
Okay.
As a reminder, technically, you folks don't have jurisdiction over the food truck ordinance because it's not part of the zoning and land use. But when we bring it, something back to the council, it doesn't hurt to have said that we vetted it with you folks, and you have some suggestions or recommendations.
Where they're permitted.
What they're permitted?
Where they're permitted, and which zones they're permitted. I think we do kind of oversee a little bit, or at least give feedback for it, too, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right. Yeah.
I just wanted to just ask staff a question, and I guess actually ask you, too. Is it appropriate, or is there a possibility for the planning board to write a letter of recommendation to the Lewiston delegation concerning Main Department of Transportation and its adherence or non-adherence to our comp plan? Like, asking whether or not the Lewiston delegation can help us in some of these battles with the way-
Main operates?
The roads just happen through residential neighborhoods without any consideration for people?
I don't know that it's inappropriate. I think that it's something, we recently went through this exercise, right, of trying to draft a letter from the board. So, I don't think that's a problem at all. I think maybe prior to doing something like that, it might be worth having a conversation maybe with Mary Ann Branschek, Public Works Director, just to give us an update as to why and where things might be, if there's any improvements either from a Lewiston perspective or an MPO perspective. But you're not wrong, Josh, like, some of the damage is done.
Well, there is going to be, because I was watching on YouTube last month, I think, or the month before even, a traffic thing on, meeting on Zoom that discussed the intersection at Webster, not Webster, at East Avenue and Russell Street?
So, there is a study, there's a-
And that's me, and they were talking about what they were gonna do. I mean, this is already in the works.
Right. I mean, there's a few things in the works. Like, for example, East Avenue is likely gonna go to two lanes with a center turn lane here in 20, what year are we in? 23?
Three, probably 25.
That's planned, so that's gonna happen. That would actually benefit the Farwell project. If there was ever a desire to use East Avenue as an access point, a turning lane would help that out quite a bit.
Yeah.
They are doing, re-signaling and re-timing the lights on the East Avenue corridor, if not this year, next year. And then you'll see, there was some reference to, in the materials for tomorrow night's joint council meeting, there's reference to a PPI grant, which is basically a neighborhood grant. And we've put in money to that to do some studies on Sabata Street as well, to see if there's certain sections of it that make sense to have a center turn lane there as well. So-
We've been trying to do that, you know, for a number of years. And, I mean, you and I, and normal people think that it should, but traffic engineers-
Don't find that normal.
Apparently, they're not normal, because they don't want it done. And, I mean, I drive that street up and down all the time, and I live on that street. And it's like, it would be so much safer if we had a turning, three lanes and a turning lane.
Maybe what I could do, if that is, I mean, we could do one of two things, but maybe sooner than later, because it may help inform you folks with respect to the LCIP when you folks look at that, is I can reach out to Mary Ann, see if she'd like to come to a future meeting and just update everybody on some of the planning initiatives that have been submitted to DOT. Because some of them are a big deal. The one we've applied for, that PPI grant, if we get that, that makes us eligible for, like, the $15 to $30 million grants that, like Sanford got earlier this year. So, we kind of have to get a smaller grant to make an argument as to what type of infrastructure improvements can be made so we can be rewarded bigger grants going forward. Yeah, just sort of piggybacking on this idea of having Mary Ann come in and talk. I think, given how land use and transportation are intrinsically tied together, they very much inform each other.
Absolutely.
Having a regular meeting, maybe before, you know, at an interval that makes sense from a planning perspective, but also from a, like, grant submittal perspective, so that we can make sure that how we're guiding development in the city matches up with some of the street improvements and vice versa. I think that would be really important. You know, if you can have pedestrian amenities come into a place before, you know, rezoning for housing, or before, you know?
Sure.
Things like that, it just would make all the difference in the world.
Coordinate a little bit more.
Yeah, you know, and I think we've already run into that a little bit with, like, the Riverwalk and the project down behind the Peck Building.
Right.
You know, things like that, where we sort of get into the situation, well, the building's gonna be built. We really wanna have this-
Came first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah, and they sort of need to happen at the same time. But guess what? You know, one of them isn't quite ready yet. So, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, in that case, I need a motion to adopt the minutes of the August 28th meeting. So, moved, Amy?
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? Roger?
No.
Josh? No, I mean, I'm calling the vote. No, I mean, I'm calling the vote.
Not to Scott, but yes.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. In that case, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? All right. All right. Do I have a second? Okay. Amy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just a reminder, council meeting tomorrow night, 6:00.
6:00 tonight. Yes.
Everybody has a packet. If not, it is online as well.
It's like, it's like basically the last week of October.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Good night.
Good night. I think, um, I'm sup-
Did you like my chicken scratch, or type it up?
If your chicken scratch is illegible, you want to PDF it to me or something like that? That's fine. I mean, you don't have to.
Can you read any of it? Anything that you're like, what the heck?
History list catering truck, ice cream truck.
I'll write it down.
Okay. No, that's fine. No. That's okay. That's like me, too. I'm just like, it's-